Okay, while Mr. Robbins is getting himself settled, we'll start our meeting before we call the meeting to order with instruction on Spanish interpretation.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to give the instructions on how to access Spanish interpretation. We are offering live interpretation in Spanish during this meeting. If you wish to hear Spanish interpretation, please click the interpretation button at the bottom right of your Zoom screen, and you're going to see a little globe icon. And please go ahead, press that, and select your language of preference. Buenas noches a todos. Estamos ofreciendo interpretación en vivo en español durante esta reunión. Si usted desea escuchar la interpretación en español, por favor, haga clic en el botón de interpretación o interpretation. En la parte inferior derecha de la pantalla Zoom, usted va a ver un icono de globo terráqueo. Ahí le tiene que presionar para que usted seleccione su idioma de preferencia. Si usted se está reuniendo a través de la aplicación Zoom por su smartphone, entonces escoja los tres puntitos que es más en la parte inferior derecha de su pantalla. Es selección interpretación del idioma. Luego elija español, y por último le da en donde dice listo. Si usted solamente quiere escuchar a los intérpretes y no a los oradores, por favor asegúrese de silenciar audio original. Todos deben de escoger un idioma, no se queden en la posición de apagada predeterminada. Gracias. Thank you. Back to you.
Thank you. Now I'll read our land acknowledgement. The city of South Lake Tahoe acknowledges the lands we occupy today are the lands and the home of the Washi Shu, the people from here known today as the Washoe Tribe of Nevada and California, a sovereign nation. Since the beginning of time and for thousands of years before the arrival of any other people, the Washoe lived here and cared for this place with values and intention that we can all learn from. On behalf of the city council, I would like to acknowledge, thank, and honor the indigenous Washoe tribal communities that are the past, present, and future stewards of the Lake Tahoe Basin. With that, I will call the meeting to order, and if everybody could please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. City Clerk, would you please do roll call?
Of course. Councilmember Roberts.
President.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Here.
Councilmember Robbins.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bass.
Here.
Mayor Wallace.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to do public comment on our closed session item. I'm also going to allow people to speak on our open session item, if that is going to come. And that way, if you don't want to wait around, you want to get home because of the weather, you're welcome to. The limit is going to be three minutes. And just so you're aware, the only two items that are possibly on the agenda tonight are whether or not we appeal and whether or not we do a moratorium. We will not be talking about any future ordinance of VHR ordinance. So just the two items, and if you guys could please be concise, I would appreciate it. So at this time, anybody who would like to speak? Mr. Goodman, please come forward.
I'm a little confused, though. We can talk about VHRs?
You can talk about the two items on our agenda, and honestly, you can talk about VHRs. That's on the agenda.
Jerry Goodman, a local, since you're all here and you're going to have a closed session again, you probably haven't decided what you're going to do. And I have an alternative, is what you just said. I think it's a no-brainer to put this back on the ballot. You'd have no problem with that, and that's what I believe. In 1976, my wife and I started a family, and we bought some property. And we looked all around, and we found a nice residentially zoned area. And with the computers, by 1998 or 97, it got to be a zoo around there. Within 500 yards of our property, there was 20 vacation rentals. One is bad enough, but 20 of them, it was terrible living there. We still live there now, and it's been nice. And, okay, so when they were banned, there was, well, like I said, there was 20 of them around me. There was a lot of meetings with the realtors and the people that were renting them out and everything, and every meeting, there was another thing they said, no hot tubs after a certain time, no parking on the dirt, no this or that, or this or that, or there'd be, you know, enforcement. You can't enforce vacation rentals. It's impossible. You drive up in your driveway, and there's a guy peeing there. You go to bed at night, and there's a guy puking off the balcony next door to you. I mean, these things, you're already bothered, so enforcement, it doesn't help. That's, it'll never happen. You had a lot of letters in to ban, to get rid of Measure T. And there's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people. You should have had 1,400 letters, actually. And the letters, you can just say, okay, here's the letters that came in. It was the vote. It was more than 50% letters from the locals who did not want vacation rentals. That's your letters, not the 70 letters you got. You've got to think that the locals are stupid or something, because we already voted on this, and now you're hedging and whoring because there's a vast amount of investors that want to ruin our neighborhoods. Don't be cowards, okay? You know, you guys, you guys are the ones. Just put it back in the ballot and let the voters decide. We could lose. Let the voters decide. It's that easy. Don't be chicken. If you vote not to do anything and allow these vacation rentals to come back, I'm just going to ask you, I don't want you to answer. We're going to phone, or can we phone each of you when there's a problem instead of the police? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Mr. Messina?
Thank you, council members and ladies and gentlemen. Number one, as a proponent of Measure T, I don't believe Scott Robbins should be allowed to participate in these proceedings. He should be recused. And as to the appeal of the court's decision, there's a number of reasons that you shouldn't. One is, the court is correct, and you'd be wasting time and money. The second is, non-chartered cities like South Lake Tahoe are pro, for non-chartered cities like South Lake Tahoe, the California Constitution specifically requires that an initiative apply uniformly to the entire city, which Measure T clearly does not. Another reason is, you'd just be wasting more time and money. It's ultimately going to lose. And also, it was a corrupted election, because the registrar voter told 1,400 property owners that they could not vote in that election, even though they legally could have. And all 1,400 of those property owners were VHR owners. So the election's corrupt, it violates the California Constitution, the court's decision was correct, let it go, move on. And, okay, since we've got to talk about both issues here, the court's overturning Measure T returns the status to everything as it was before it was passed. The city will be responsible for losses caused by delays in reinstating those VHR owners, their permits, and their right to rent their homes. There is no reason to have extended delays in re-establishing that. It's all on record, you can do it tomorrow. Those who are forced to sell their VHR properties because of this insidious measure should be given an opportunity to start a new VHR somewhere. The city should work with them and give them a chance to recover. They've already lost years and years of income. We should be looking for ways to repair the damage done by the proponents of Measure T, and the city should look for ways to recover damages from them if possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Messina. I'm sorry, this gentleman. And then you'll be next.
Good evening. Dan May for the record. I just, I want to speak about ballot initiatives in general. I find it, basically, I want to think about why they happen in the first place, because it's no one's first option. Ballot initiatives take a lot of time, a lot of effort, they are divisive, clearly, they cost a lot of money. So why do people do it? Because they see a problem that they don't see being addressed adequately. The fact of the matter is, if there wasn't a problem, there'd be no ballot initiative. If people felt that the city council was able to address the problem sufficiently, there would be no ballot initiative. If the city council convinced the concerned citizens of why their way forward is not the best way forward, there'd be no ballot initiative. But there was. And I just, I want, I encourage you all to think of a ballot initiative as being a failure of the city council. Not in a negative sense, but in a, we should have found a way to avoid this. And maybe a more positive way to look at it is to challenge the city council, to be a city council that has no new initiatives coming on their watch. Because, as I said before, it takes a lot of money, it's very time-intensive, and it's very divisive. And it erodes trust in people's faith in the government, that things are going to go the way they expected to, because people see people working around city council. Finally, with regards to the appeal, I just find I would be, my trust in local government would be severely hampered if I thought that the city council could just choose to not defend something that was voted on by its citizens. Why would I trust that any ballot initiative would be worth voting on if I didn't think that the city council would be willing to back it? Because, as I said before, we already know that a ballot initiative means that people are trying to work around the city council. That's the reality. And so if city council's not going to back it up even after people vote for it, that's concerning to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. May. Yes, please come.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for this opportunity to share my comment. I'm in support of an appeal of the ruling because I have been a direct beneficiary of Measure T. I think it's a nice chance to remind the council of ways that this measure has benefited our community that we might not normally think of. About five years ago, when I wanted to move to Tahoe, I was able to secure a rental here because the property that I moved into and rented had formerly been a short-term vacation rental. When the property had been sold, the permit did not travel to the new owners, and the new owners turned around and put the home on the market as a long-term rental. I was able to move to Tahoe with my partner, two of our friends, and really enjoyed living in that property for two years. Five years later, we all still live in the community, we shop here, we recreate here, we build community here, and that's thanks to a pathway to join our community that was made possible by Measure T, which converted housing from being short-term vacation rental into a long-term rental property. So here to express my support of policies like this into the future, and to an appeal of the ruling to preserve the parts of Measure T that can benefit our community into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak on this item or these items? Please come up.
My name is Janice Stillians, and I live in Bijou Pines area. And I hope you guys do go for an appeal for this, because I am a resident. It is a, it was zone residential. On my block alone, I had 10 vacation rentals. When I walked my dog, I literally had to throw a bag, a poop, at a car, so they wouldn't run me over, because we would have, on our block alone, 44 extra cars and 90 extra people just on our block alone. It is a democracy. We did vote not to have Measure T. This is a business. I'm not going to have a strip club at my house. That is a business also. So I'm hoping you look at this and think about this as it is a business. And this lawyer, or this judge in Placerville, who is a, was a lawyer that was with Family Law, why aren't we allowed, as residents, to stick up for our area where we live and be able to stand up and maybe go there and say something at the courthouse to support living? I don't want a bunch of tourists in my neighborhood. I've lived in Tahoe since 1973, and I understand we have tourists, but this is a little over the top. And then my neighborhood was very run over with that. And I'm hoping you'll be able to afford to do this. I know we have that wall going on between the campground and the lake, which is going to cost millions of dollars, and I hope that you've been able to put some money aside for this issue. Thank you very much. And that wall between the lake and the forest is going to be quite the tag thing for all the gang members to go and tag. So good luck with keeping that cleaned up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stillians. Please come forward.
Thank you. My name is Mark Brower. I live at 844 El Dorado. That's my home. It's the second home. My primary home is in Lake Geneva, Wisconsin, a community very similar to Tahoe, tourist area. So my second home is here, but I also, my shoe is on the other foot in my primary home. And I think that I would suggest that you do not appeal Zone, the Measure T. And here's why. I think that there are a lot of different perspectives. The perspectives here that we refer to tonight are very valuable, and I think those voices need to be heard and respected. There are many people who are members of the community, such as myself, who have second homes, although we can't vote, those voices should also be respected, as well as the business community, who encourages tourism. And of course, short-term rentals allow more capacity for the town to host tourists. But I think that the tourists need to be respectful of the community. When I saw the other week that this was overturned, I did some homework. I reviewed in Wisconsin and in California how other communities have handled this contentious issue. Every community is different. Every solution is different for every community. But there were several things that were proposed, I thought, that made good sense. And this follows up with an email that I sent out yesterday. Hopefully, some of you saw that. Many communities limit the number of nights, and I think that's very appropriate. Tahoe has a rental season, basically, three, three-and-a-half months in the summer, three, three-and-a-half months in the winter. I think that somewhere in the range of 210 nights maximum would be appropriate. I think that one also might block off certain months. Let's say you block off September 15th and November 15th, and maybe April 1st to May 1st. I think that requiring a professional property management is appropriate. I did see that. I also reviewed the documents on this topic. I thought that the city attorney put together a very nice document, and in that document was requiring property management. I thought that was appropriate. Maximum occupancy per home. I reviewed ordinance 218, 1120. To be honest, I think it probably needs to be cut down as far as the maximum occupancy. My home is four bedrooms, it's got three parking spots, it could potentially hold 12 people, according to the city ordinance. It's probably too many. Length of stay, as many of our citizens have said, there are guests that are unruly. My guess would be that those two- to three-night rentals are the party animals that's been along in our community. Thank you very much for your time, and please consider being proactive, looking forward, not backward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Salmon? I'm sorry, you were next. Hold on just a second, Mr. Salmon. Please come.
My name is Barbara Knapp. I've been a resident of South Lake Tahoe since 1983, and I want to address the city council and ask if they appeal the recent reversal of Measure T. First of all, we voted to eliminate vacation rentals within our neighborhoods, and this was the vote of the people that lived here, and this is the way that we addressed it, and the outcome was favorable for the people that voted against it. But during the time that we did have vacation rentals, and I think the reason that many of us voted against it, was due to unruly visitors coming into our neighborhoods and disrupting us. I don't know if you've ever tried to have a family barbecue on the Fourth of July with your grandchildren, and have people that were completely unruly, 20, 30 people showing up at a house across the street yelling, screaming, blasting music, and later on in the day, address me and call me names because I asked them to turn the music down. These are the kind of things that we had to go through. Calling the police on the Fourth of July just wasn't an option. Didn't seem that it was that bad at the time. And then turning them into the VHR hotline, we could do that, but it wouldn't be addressed at that time either. So there was all these problems, and they continued to happen, and this was constant. It wasn't just, it seemed like it got worse over the years until the VHRs were eliminated. So what I'm asking is that the city council address this and appeal the Measure T reversal in favor of the citizens of South Lake Tahoe. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Salmon?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, honorable council members. My name is Mark Salmon. I'm a member of the South Lake Tahoe Property Owners Group. I stand before you today to urge the city council not to appeal the recent court decision overturning Measure T. This is a pivotal moment for the city, one that calls for a pragmatic approach focusing on the risks associated with further legal action. This is not an emotional decision. It's not whether each of you personally are in favor of VHRs, or whether you have an interest in supporting one group over another. This is a business decision for the city. What do you stand to gain from pursuing an appeal, and what do you stand to lose? What is the best for the entire community? The Superior Court's ruling is unequivocal. The measure was deemed unconstitutional due to the discriminatory nature violating the dormant commerce clause. Pursuing an appeal in light of this clear legal precedent poses significant financial risk, as the likelihood of overturning a well-founded constitutional ruling is minimal. Furthermore, this will only increase the city's exposure to additional lawsuits from property owners seeking compensation for damages during the enforcement of Measure T. These liabilities will further strain the city's financial resources and divert attention from pressing community needs. The court has provided clear guidance. Let's take it. Let's be strategic and responsible with our city's resources. Let's move forward together. Let's invest in policies that work for all of South Lake Tahoe, rather than prolonging a legal fight that only keeps us divided. It's already spring, so the time for action is now. South Lake Tahoe already has a well-crafted VHR ordinance, the one that was put into place in 2018 after years of government inaction. That ordinance was effective through 2021, providing structure, enforcement, and balance. Instead of wasting months in stakeholder meetings, go to the archives, dust off what worked, and put it back into play immediately. Sure, take 30 to 45 days to hire the necessary administrative staff and community officers, but be ready to issue permits on June 1st. Our busiest season is right around the corner, and every delay means more frustration, more lost revenue, and more division within our community. Many responsible property owners lost their permits due to Measure T. Let them streamline the process to regain them. Small businesses in South Lake Tahoe depend on summer tourism to survive the shoulder seasons. By acting now, you show that you care about keeping them afloat. The foundation is there. Use it. Be efficient by acting decisively, fairly, and in the best interests of South Lake Tahoe.
Thank you, Mr. Salmon. We're, I appreciate that you agree with him, but we're, we try to hear both sides without that kind of stuff. So if you could please refrain, I would appreciate it. Mr. Roberson?
Thank you. Steve Roberson, citizen of South Lake Tahoe. This is a historic day for the city council and for the city. You have an opportunity to regain control of an important issue. That issue is important to employees, to businesses, to the residents, and to homeowners. In December of 2017, the city council had passed the strictest ordinance in the country. And that ordinance was working. However, within two weeks of that ordinance being put into place, the signatures were being gathered. So that ordinance never had a chance before the vote was made. Measure T stripped the rights for the city to manage VHRs, so you guys couldn't do anything about it. Now you have the opportunity to do that. Today, you can vote to accept the court's ruling and restore family-friendly tourism. Bring back jobs, bring back businesses, and generate city funding in an uncertain financial future. These economic times are a little frightening. Accepting the ruling is a step forward. This is not a step backwards. In fact, you can lean on the strict ordinance that's been in place, that was in place for three years, even while Measure T was waiting to go into place. It was working. Complaints were down. Unemployment was at an all-time, excuse me, at an all-time low in the city. Small businesses throughout the city, including the west side of town, were thriving. City revenues from VHRs were approaching $4 million. Every single year, those funds went to the rec center, which still needs money: police, fire, roads, and snow clearing. We have a lot of projects in the city that could really use these funds today. I ask you to accept the court's ruling. Bring back jobs, businesses, income for the city, and let's build on what was working through 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberson. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak? Mr. Imhoff?
Mayor Wallace, city council, staff, and guests. My name is Steve Imhoff, and let me start by saying that I have no pony in this show. Whatever the city decides to do has no effect on my family or myself. It is obvious from the emotions run very high on both sides of the aisle concerning Measure T. However, as our elected officials, you need to table those emotions and decide this matter based on your oath of office placed you in that seat. That is the support and defense of the Constitution of the United States of America. There is little doubt that the permanent resident exception in Measure T did violate the dormant commerce clause in its highly discriminatory. The only question remains, can it be severed from the balance of the measure? The author of Measure T once was asked why he included the permanent resident exception. His response: to get more votes. In doing so, he placed a carrot in front of the voter, and they bit. Not even the author of Measure T was convinced that this measure would pass without the special consideration given to an exclusive group of people called the voter. You know, if I bit that carrot and voted for Measure T, only to find out that the permanent resident exception has now been eliminated, I would be pissed. Why? Because it was a major consideration in my yes vote. By eliminating this provision, totally changes the measure. And considering slim margin of passage, the results would have been different if the permanent resident exception had not been included. And that is why the permanent resident exception cannot be severed from Measure T. So council, in closing, I urge you to do the right thing and honor your oath to the Constitution by not appealing the decision of the El Dorado Superior Court. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Imhoff. Anyone else in the room? Mr. Frye. And then you'll be next.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name's Caleb Frye. I'm a local homeowner and owner of Vacation Rental Assistance, or VRA. I created a petition for the city to not appeal the court ruling and to reinstate the VHR ordinance. It has around 600 signatures and growing, and dozens of comments, which were submitted as public comment for your record. While I understand and share the frustrations that led to Measure T, I believe their tactics were misleading and utilized an unconstitutional provision which undermined the integrity of the measure. Excuse me, undermined the integrity of the vote. I simply encourage the city to not appeal the court ruling, stop exhausting resources and services. I simply encourage the city to not appeal the court ruling, stop exhausting resources, and take the opportunity to regain control of the V H Rs, which are an extremely important topic for this community's vitality. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Frye. Mr. TeShara, there's one person right before you. Is that okay?
Yep, absolutely.
Please come forward.
I'm Shawnee Riva, born and raised in Lake Tahoe. My husband and I worked our butts off to own a couple second properties up here, a few of which we long-term, but we bought one just to V H R. Our property rights, we feel, were taken from us. I do understand, and I want to say, we love our long-term renters. We've had some in there for eight years. We love locals coming, becoming locals. But we live in a tourist town, and I do agree that it was getting out of hand. But most of us, even probably people that don't love V H Rs in Tahoe, rent Airbnbs, whatever, in other places. And I just think, yes, we need to regulate them. And like the other gentleman said, it's working in the county. If we would have had a chance in the city, I think it would have worked. Right now, we live across the street from a six-bedroom house that was a vacation rental. We watched weddings there. We met people there. They gave us their leftover food. Yes, it was loud sometimes. We knocked. We asked. Right now, we've got twelve J-1s living there, who we also love, but honestly, nine cars parked back and forth every which way. My daughter's car got hit by them last week. It's just, for lack of a better word, a shitshow. They're wonderful, but there's a lot of people in this house. Please don't appeal this. Give us our property rights. Many of us worked hard and trust the system. Let it regulate this time. And three strikes, you're out. You lose your permit. That was working. It could work. Give it a try. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riva. Mr. TeShara.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. Good evening. Steve TeShara on behalf of Tahoe Chamber. Consistent with the letter that we sent you all last week, let's heal, not appeal. I think a couple of the good points have been made here tonight. The fact that the city council, this city council or any other city council, did not have control over V H Rs in the affected area, you can regain that now, which is important. And since 2018 and what's happened, a lot of other jurisdictions have figured out ways to do effective enforcement, balancing people's use of their property with regulatory values that are appropriate for neighborhoods. There were a lot of businesses that, you know, years ago, the big move was everybody wanted to be down at State Line with Heavenly Village and all the activity down there. And the city was concerned, rightfully so, that there weren't a lot of businesses at this end of town. And businesses did invest in the Y area. And then when Measure T came in, a lot of them closed or relocated to State Line. So let's restore the business activity at this end of town. There is a way to do this, and I know it's going to take a period of time for the moratorium, I understand that. But let's heal and not appeal. The court decision was clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. TeShara. Mr. Wallace.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council. Dwayne Wallace, the South Tahoe Chamber of Commerce. What do we know now that we didn't know then? Well, the people were really hurting when it came to V H Rs. Jerry Goodman's one of the finest people I know. I agree with him. It was out of control. The enforcement was just not there. We now know that that should have been handled differently. But what do we know about Measure T that we didn't know then, for sure then? We were told that Measure T would produce tons and tons of rentals, permanent rentals. It did not. We were told that it wouldn't hurt our economy. And as a fifty-two-year resident and the CEO of the South Tahoe Chamber of Commerce, I can tell you, it has hurt greatly, greatly. We have over forty businesses that have closed. And I personally, because I work in the schools, know of families that left because their jobs were gone. I know a plumber guy, owner of a plumbing company, that almost, he was a well-established company, almost went out of business because of this. What do we know now that we didn't know then? And that's that people just went underground, kind of like what happened with the cannabis stuff. When it was illegal, they just went underground. So there is a chance for you to make things right. And what Mr. Salmon said, I agree with. Based on the attorneys I've talked to, once the city steps into the risky, risky legal ground of not, of appealing this, they're on their own when it comes to insurances and things like that. And what that means is if they lose, it's a real gamble. It's gambling town. If they lose, that means that this city could be bankrupted by the lawsuits that would surely come. And the chances of overturning one of these is very rare. Once an unconstitutional ruling's there, it's, your attorney will probably tell you. So what do we do now? You have the choice of either leaving the one from 2017, which was good, or chasing the perfect and trying to get something exactly right. Could take months and months to do that. It's up to you. That's why they pay you the big bucks. And so I wish you luck in that, and I hope you understand that our chamber believes you should not appeal. It's too risky. And, but we think it's time our time, time our town would heal, and let's, let's work together to make it work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
Oh, by the way, how many people said would stand if you're agreeing with me here?
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Is there any, please come forward. Ms. Gresh. I think I got it right this time. Ms. Gresh, right?
You did. Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name's Lauren Gresh. I'm general manager with R and R Vacation Rentals. I'm also a local homeowner here. I would just like to say that due to this industry, I was able to purchase my first home in 2016, my first and only home. Very proud of that. I moved here in ninety-six, did the Tahoe Hustle, worked many different jobs at one time, and this is a industry that's afforded me a steady income and does for several of my coworkers. We now employ twenty-eight full-time, year-round workers. We have fifteen contracted cleaning companies that we work with. When Measure T went through, we lost a quarter of our business. We were inundated with calls from housekeepers that were looking for work that lost their I feel like appealing this would give me more anxiety over what's happening with current affairs in our government. I feel like we need these tax dollars more than ever that vacation rentals bring to our town. I feel for residents that have had bad experiences with, you know, people that come and visit and aren't respectful. But I do know from experience with professional property management that it can be done right. Just, you know, a quarter mile from here, we manage rentals in the county and have great success. No permit violations. We screen our guests. We use decibel readers. We are very responsible and we have great relationships with our neighbors. We know that it can be done right, and we know that the city has that opportunity to bring those opportunities back to our town. So I encourage you not to appeal. Do not do a long moratorium. Let's let the ordinance work and let the property managers and owners have their rights back and help our city. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gresh. Mr. Moser.
Ed Moser, South Lake Tahoe. I think you should appeal. I think you owe it to, to the voters. You know, it's your duty as we've come this far and there isn't, it's not a matter of the constitutionality of it as to decide on the severability clause is the main, is the main point here. I argued against, with the people there that drew up Measure T there and Peggy and them originally, and I objected to that being in there. Number one, I said, because I believe if you check, at the time, IRS was allowing, you could rent, anybody could rent their house for up to fourteen days out of the year with IRS standards, which I know that from people that used for filming. You can rent your house out as a set for movie set or whatever. So that's where, you know, for tax reasons and stuff, you were allowed to rent out for up to fourteen days. So I said, you should just allow them to have that. I don't know if that's still in place. But anyway, you know, I followed this since 2003 when the original ordinance was drafted and was in favor of it. You know, I was managing one for my landlord. It was, it was two houses. I was living in one on the property and couldn't control them. You know, I was right there behind them, you know, would tell them the rules, lay down the rules, and, you know, six would rent it, and next thing I know, there's twenty-three kids in there and, and four dogs and stuff. So, and, and, you know, half the time, the people just lied, and it was uncontrollable. And like I said, I was right behind them and told them when they rented it. So that's, you know, where I became involved was, saw the problems. But the biggest problem was housing, you know, also of restricting housing. And I pointed out in 2004, showed the council, Money Magazine, we were in the top five in the country for rate of increase in houses. And not only South Lake Tahoe, but the county part and the two together was twenty-six, twenty-seven and a half percent or so, I believe. And so that was the effect that it had. And I said, it's going to prevent you from having housing, but also creating a second and third economy if the housing isn't there for it. And that's borne out to be true. So, you know, I think you should take, do this, you know. The allowance in this, you know, you're elected to represent the people, and as far as the fifty-eight votes, you know, they were outspent five, over five hundred thousand to two thousand dollars, you know, and you have to take that more into consideration than the thirty, thirty-day clause in there and stuff. They were just, you know, overpowered with funding and didn't even get one mailing out. I think that would have made a big difference. So I think you peel it, take it from there, because there's also repercussions down the road if it, if it doesn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. Please come. Ms. Underwood, right?
Mayor Wallace and council members, I'm Lisa Underwood. I'm with Tahoe Keys Resort. As a thirty-three-year-old local company with a heartfelt interest in the community because we live and work here, I have a few asks. My first ask is please do not appeal. We ask also that you reinstate the previous ordinance without hesitation. It came out of a lengthy committee process and wasn't given ample opportunity prior to T. We did, however, follow the guidelines of this ordinance from 2018 through the end of 2021 with success. Guests were educated, they were fined when necessary, and there were very few verified complaints. And I'm sure you have this still in your records. We ask that you give priority to the homeowners who previously had permits. The current application can be utilized for a renewal permit, streamlining the process for all. We ask that you hear us, the business community and the V H R industry. We are not the enemy. We have, and we have been painted to be that, but we're not the enemy. We care about South Lake Tahoe, our neighborhoods, and both our permanent residents and our second homeowners. We always have. Use us as a resource and let us be the solution, not the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Underwood. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak on either or both of the items? Okay, we're going to move to our Zoom platform.
Thank you, Mayor. I do see that we have six hands raised, and we'll just take them in order. First, we have Marjorie Green.
Thank you for taking my, my comment. I would like to urge the council not to appeal, primarily because it's unlikely to be successful, and I'd prefer to see those tax dollars spent elsewhere. Instead, I'd like to see the council and the community work towards, you know, a solution that works. There was a lot in place, even though everything that was in place was somewhat challenging. I'd like to see nuisance laws that make sense and also fines that are applied to the people who actually disrupt that piece. So again, my, my comment is to not appeal. I can't see that the, the wording of Measure T was constitutional, so I don't think we'd be successful and instead use all of those funds and efforts to actually, you know, support our community. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have telephone number with the last four digits of three eight five two.
I'm Diane Reese, a member of the Tahoe Neighborhoods Group. Tonight's council is faced with the same opportunity that council had in 2018 when members, including council members Bass and Wallace, voted unanimously to defend in court the majority vote of Measure T. Because of a successful vote by locals that defeated outsiders and developers who tried to buy the results of the election with a half a million dollars, residents have enjoyed living in neighborhoods that are no longer negatively impacted by houses filled with the intrusive behavior of up to as many as twenty-four individuals. I hope this council will look at the city's financial data that shows that money generated by T O T dollars after V H Rs were restricted has remained the same or has actually increased. Tourists return to hotels and the V H R properties in the tourist core and the commercial zones where they belong. Let the data also show that many of those residential V H Rs are now occupied by full-time residents. I personally know that at least three of the six previously identified legal and illegal V H Rs within three hundred feet of my home are now occupied by full-time respectful neighbors. Let us also not forget that previous courts have ruled in favor of all but one component of Measure T. The court's findings affirm that the banning of vacation rentals in residentially zoned neighborhoods is constitutionally valid. Only this last judge, Schlossberg, allowed an obscure component regarding the use of qualified rentals to be unconstitutional. His judgment that the Q V H R component was an integral part of the entire measure should raise concern by this council since that decision is flawed. Factually, city evidence and documentation will show that about two residents chose to make use of this Q portion of Measure T the first year it was enacted. That is far from being recognized as an integral part of the initiative since it obviously didn't influence the outcome of the vote. I hope that council will give our city attorneys the opportunity to present case law to the court that shows that the severability clause built into the measure should have been applied so that the majority of the initiative could remain intact. Please don't be influenced or swayed by threats of lawsuits from the opponents of Measure T. On behalf of the voters who want the opportunity to see all legal actions taken to a final conclusion, we urge you to file an appeal. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. All right. Next up, we have Samantha Epstein. I'm sorry, Epperson.
My name is, okay, great. Yep, my name is Samantha Epperson, and I work for R and R Vacation Rentals, and I have so since 2013. So for over eleven years, I have been able to benefit from this wonderful company. And from the beginning, Stu and Diana Roberson have created the culture in our company to our neighbors and to go to all lengths possible to make sure that our guests are respectful, follow the rules. And if not, we go to the home immediately and we remedy the situation involving anybody we need to, to make sure that the rules are enforced, as long, going as far as evicting guests if needed. So as Lauren, my GM, went through beforehand, there are companies that do it right, and we are one of them. We are shining example of it. In fact, many of the homes I worked for and property managed at the time, the, the neighbors are just, they come to me and they tell me that they think the Measure T is kind of just immoral and doesn't make sense. They were, their, their neighborhoods are now ghost towns they actually enjoy. They actually enjoy the renters that came in that were families that were there to make memories. And they enjoy getting to know them and seeing, you know, letting them be kind of a shining example of showing off how beautiful our town is. So I do hear the concerns of all the other local residents. And I'm so sorry that that has happened to you and yet you've had negative experiences. We are working very hard. We do our best to make sure that all of our guests are respectful. We talk to each guest over the phone to make sure they're age appropriate, make sure they're not coming up for parties, et cetera. And I do think the loss of revenue to businesses and through all the projects throughout the city that could really use that tax revenue is imperative. I have worked for the company now for over 11 years. I was just able to buy my, my first house here in the Highland Woods neighborhood. And my job with R and R has allowed me to do that along with so many of my coworkers. We don't have any turnover. Essentially, all of our employees are there for years and years. It allows steady income for years and year round for local residents. So thank you so much for listening. Please, I am voting here for not appealing. Let's not drag this process on any longer. And let's let the previous ordinance that was already the strictest in the county or in the country, I'm sorry, believe me, I had to tell every guest that I screened over the phone that we have these strict rules to follow them or else they will be fined. Let's let that work. Let's bring money back into the city and let's support locals who need this work and support businesses that need this money. Thank you.
Thank you. Pardon me. All right, next up we have Ravi.
So I, I implore the city council to please, please not appeal this court decision. We have a constitution for a reason. It is to protect what is right and not simply what the majority wishes. Tahoe is a tourist town and hotels do not offer what families, I want to repeat, families want for their vacations. Families do not want to live near the casino, do not want to live near, anywhere near state line. They want to live in VHRs. Let's be thankful that we have a chance to do over this heavy-handed approach that Measure T took. Let's have an ordinance like what's there in the county to help Tahoe's economy. This needs to be done responsibly and enforced proactively. Have code enforcement patrol the streets, require property managers to monitor their properties. Tahoe's economy needs tourists. Look at the number of businesses in the city that are closed. We just need to do it responsibly. Let's limit the number of cars, ban the use of hot tubs, ban McMansions hosting 12-plus guests. Without tourists, Tahoe and its hardworking locals who depend on this economy will spiral into doom. I heard the voice of someone who said, we are not the enemy, and I want to echo that. Let's, let's not appeal Measure T and let's get back to work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up we have Roberta Heinlein.
Hello.
Hello, go ahead.
Thank you for hearing me. I have been in the hospitality industry for nearly 30 years, 12 of those years in South Lake Tahoe. And I've, with Measure T, I watched a very successful industry that employed thousands of locals shrivel up and nearly disappear over the course of a year. When Measure T fully took effect, one of the objectives was making homes more, more available for our locals. And that failed miserably. The result was a flood in the real estate market that pushed prices up to anyone even considering to buy a home here. It also resulted in many foreclosures on so many people's dreams. Locals ended up moving out of Tahoe, jobs were lost, and they couldn't afford to live here. I sincerely think that with proper management and strict enforcement by each individual company, we can make this work. My current, my current employer never received any violations and uses state-of-the-art noise monitoring and personally screens every single guest that books a home here in South Lake Tahoe. If it's not a good fit, we won't allow them to stay. Let's make South Lake Tahoe a thriving economy again. A lot of negative events from Measure T can still be turned around. With the proper management of vacation homes, we can make this work. I'm sincerely asking the city not to appeal the Measure T initiative. It will benefit our economy and bring jobs back into our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up we have Melissa Soderston.
Yes, thank you, Melissa Soderston, South Lake Tahoe. I think this one is really difficult. And I think it entirely depends on the strength of the severability clause. Because this was a citizens initiative, obviously that's why they said it was not able to be severed. But if there is a clause in the initiative, then clearly it can be. Obviously enforcing zoning laws is constitutional. So I think that if that can be severed, it can clearly be appealed. Other than that, our neighborhoods have been wonderful since Measure T passed. Megan's Law exists to protect our neighborhoods from sex offenders. Having vacation rentals in our neighborhood does not give us any way to protect ourselves from sex offenders that should be registered being in our neighborhoods. I have children, they walk around our neighborhood. Since Measure T passed, they have been able to walk around our neighborhood like children used to do, in groups, unsupervised, having fun, enjoying life as children. Would be really unfortunate to have the threat of just whoever again in our neighborhoods. If we do not appeal, which if, if we can sever the QVHR section, we definitely should appeal, then we need to have a moratorium. We do not want these things back in our neighborhoods and we need to ensure that it is done properly if they are here. And hopefully, if this does not get appealed, we'll just have another citizens initiative because the voters spoke. We do not want these here and I appreciate your time today.
Thank you very much. All right, next up we have telephone number with the last four digits, 8706. Yes, go ahead.
Dear council members, for record, my name is Deepak Sharma. My family owns and operates several commercial real estate and lodging businesses in the city. They're lodging businesses, but they're all in commercial areas. So my comments here are regarding the commercial areas of the town. My request is to please limit any VHR-related restrictions strictly to residential areas. Areas owned commercially within the city limits are for business and they must stay open for business. And pretty much the only business in this town is tourism industry. So there should never be any restrictions on operating VHRs in commercial areas. Some of the debates in the recent times went too far in attempting to restrict VHRs in commercial areas. They went too far. While we are debating Measure T, which put restrictions or ban on VHRs, those restrictions were in residential areas. Measure T excluded commercially zoned areas from any VHR-related restrictions. While council is deviating the path forward, commercially zoned areas of the town must be kept free from any VHR restriction. I request the city council to support the businesses in town and leave the commercially zoned areas and keep them open for VHR business. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next up we have Dugan Smith.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great. I, I just want to speak briefly about my experience here. I have lived in Tahoe since 1998. I came here as a G1 worker at Heavenly. And I was one of these people like someone mentioned earlier, in a house with 10 of us living there, but on any given night, probably 20 people in there, not being very respectful of our neighborhood. And I feel bad for that, but I've moved on. I'm now a, raising a family here. It's 25 years later. I've got a couple of kids in middle school. And I've lived over that time in many neighborhoods around town. And I think what people have to realize is people are people and neighbors are neighbors. And vacation rentals are groups of people that know each other or a family coming to spend time in a house. It's a residential use. It's really exactly the same that happens in any long-term house. In my time up here, I've had just as many issues with long-term neighbors as I have with vacation rental neighbors. In fact, I kind of prefer vacation rental neighbors because at least I know the house will be empty in a day or two and we can move on. And at least I know I have some recourse with the managers and with code enforcement and everything else. But, you know, there's good people and bad people, good neighbors and bad neighbors. There's, I don't even know if I want to go back to this, but the sex offenders can drive into your neighborhood. They don't have to spend the night. It's not really a thing, I don't think. My kids walk around the neighborhood. I never felt that they shouldn't walk around the neighborhood prior to Measure T or post Measure T. That's about it. I just want to say that I was one of the citizens, one of the 50% of citizens that voted against Measure T. Whenever the proponents are saying that all the locals wanted this, that's just not true. Half of them were against it and they were duped by a unconstitutional clause and a bunch of false promises. So if you could please not appeal the ruling, reissue permits to the people that still own their property and want to go back into business right away and go back to strict enforcement and proactive management with the city controlling the ordinance going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next up we have Lynn Thol.
Hi, good evening. I'm Dr. Lynn Thol, South Lake Tahoe. I am encouraging the board to not appeal the court decision. The main reasons for that is the decision was clear. It was legally based. There will be significant time and expense in the appeal. It will set the city up for additional litigation. At this point, it's not an emotional decision. It needs to be a legal and business decision for the city council. I also encourage you to reinstate the previous ordinance immediately and reinstate those who had the VHR permits when Measure T was enacted. If you decide to do the moratorium, I request it be as brief as possible and be an inclusive and transparent process every step of the way. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, next up we have Sally Carmarker.
I also want to plus one on the fact that this should not be appealed because as many already stated, this was unconstitutional and it is important to protect that. I also want to talk about like really going forward. It'll be great for council to be more data-driven rather than emotions-driven. I know a few other people also mentioned that, but I know I have seen a lot of ordinances and including Measure T and all where we haven't really seen any concrete data around what was, why something was proposed and what's the data around it? And what's the accountability in terms of like, if we make changes, are we measuring whether that is actually helping the change as well? So I would encourage really everyone to be data-driven for that while making the decision so that it is as impartial as possible. I also want to encourage everybody to not think about like, or like share this us versus them mentality because I've seen that too many times about like from residents to tourists or residents to second homeowners who are not permanent residents here. I want to highlight that like second homeowners also care about their property equally because they are using it as well. That's why it is a second home. And so if there are hooligans who are coming and trashing the property, we care about it as well. I want to talk about like our VHR that we have owned for more than two years. We avoid the parties and all. We work wonderfully with our neighbors and they help us in identifying if at all any issues come up and all. And we have not had any of those. So I understand that there might be a few bad apples, but there are a lot of us who also want to do it very responsibly and want to encourage and contribute to Tahoe's economy. We always use all the local businesses while we come here, including, you know, Sierra Tahoe, which is like the local ski resort. And we really love being here. So let's shed this us versus them mentality. Let's have the regulation against people. Like somebody said, bad people are bad people. It doesn't matter whether they are residents or outsiders or tourists and they need to be regulated by law. And so I really support like going with some strict regulations that hopefully even property management companies like R and R, right? Like I mentioned, they're doing it respectfully and everybody should do it that way. And so we should enforce that on the property management along with the owners. And this would really help Tahoe, both from the business perspective as well as keeping the residential neighborhoods safe and peaceful. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up we have Blake. Blake, are you there?
Sorry, I was muted. Hi, my name is Blake Hirschaff. I'm a local Tahoe small business owner. I'm a former elected chair of a planning board that dealt, that for years dealt with the STR issue. What you have in front of you is a difficult decision and I don't envy it. You have a mandate from the voters. I know you were all elected by those same voters on the, that's sitting on the council right now. The voters asked you to enhance safety and some of the violence that we saw from out-of-towners a few years ago. And it's a really difficult decision. One side benefit I saw after COVID and the migration issues that we had and the workforce issues we had was that our, our people who work for our local small businesses and restaurants can finally find a place to live. On the north side of the lake, we're seeing people who, every time you go to a restaurant, there's at least one person working there who's homeless. It's been so nice to see people who can actually afford to live in a house. They're never going to dream of a second house. Just speaking from the elected official standpoint, 45 days is not a long enough moratorium. This is a difficult issue. You're weighing a judge's decision versus a voter mandate. 45 days, as you know, is nothing when it comes to staff reports and council agendas. If you consider a moratorium at all, please consider a six-month moratorium. Give yourself time to do good policymaking. I know everybody at the table right there is a great policymaker who means the best for the city of South Lake Tahoe. And you all know that 45 days is a joke. So, so please push for six months if you decide not to appeal and give yourself some time to make a really good decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up we have Sean.
Hi, Sean Ward. I grew up in Tahoe. I went to Tiny Piny preschool, doesn't exist anymore, but, and I also was a firefighter for the local community for 17 years and retired out at El Dorado Hills. I now run a company that's a luxury vacation company, Lux Vacay, that does luxury rentals and normal rentals in Lake Tahoe. We don't have any fines in 10 years and no complaints. And I think there is a way to have a policy that works with noise sensors. And we do 24-hour security and cameras, which I think would be vital to a robust ordinance. I do not support the appeal because of the constitutional right of the judgment. I really appreciate you, really appreciate you honorable city council members and your time. I know it's a tough decision. There's a lot of people on both sides. Hopefully we can come together with a ordinance that helps the community, keeps the neighborhood strong. And I would, I would like to see that. This ruling is a pivotal moment for our community and one that restores the rights of property owners and reopens opportunities for economic vitality. However, it also places an urgent responsibility on your shoulders to act decisively and responsibly to reinstate pre-Measure T ordinance. Return the permits unjust revoked and enhance policies, policy policing efforts to ensure framework serves our neighborhoods effectively. For too long, Measure T disrupted the lives of countless property owners, stripped away their ability to responsibly share their homes with visitors and cost our city millions in lost transient occupancy tax revenue. Funds that could have repaired our roads, bolstered our safety services and supported Funds that could have repaired our roads, bolstered our safety services, and supported affordable housing initiatives, which I think is very important that some part of the TOT, if this comes back, goes to affordable housing. So there's a balance in our community. The court decision has made it clear the measured discriminatory permanent resident exemption was unconstitutional and it blankets the ban on VHRs cannot stand. This is not just a legal victory for South Lake Tahoe Property Owners Group. It is, it is a call to action for you, our elected leaders, to right the wrongs inflicted over the past six years. First and foremost, I implore you to immediately reinstate the old VHR owners ordinance that existed prior to Measure T's enactment. This framework with its established permitting process allowed for a balanced coexistence between residents and responsible short-term rentals. It is a proven system that can be swiftly restored to bring stability back to our community. To delay or resist this step risks further legal and financial peril. Property owners now vindicated may pursue lawsuits for damages stemming from lost rental income, a burden that could fall on our city's taxpayers if permits remain withheld. The clock is ticking. Once the judgment is formally entered, you have just 60 days to decide on an appeal. I urge you not to waste resources fighting a losing battle, but to act proactively by reinstating.
Thank you, Sean. Your three minutes are up.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your time.
All right, we have one more hand raised. All right, next up is Francesca, Francesca Baling.
Hi, council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Francesca Baling. I'd like to urge you to appeal this decision on Measure T. You were elected to represent us, the voters of South Lake Tahoe, who voted Measure T into law. Many of my friends here in Tahoe own or rent houses that were previously VHRs. These homes became available for use only because of Measure T. You've heard tonight about how lucrative short-term rentals can be. I am lucky enough to live in a house that's been a long-term rental for a long time, owned by someone who I hope has no interest in turning it into a short-term rental. We are all full-time locals who contribute daily to the local economy and community. I'm not sure that many current full-time locals will be so lucky. The Measure T we voted for has a severability clause, which ensures that the measure can stand even if part of it is struck down. This judge made the wrong call. Please appeal Measure T and continue representing your local voters. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that was, oh, we have one more hand raised. Ms. Richmond.
Good evening, city council. I wanted to come in tonight to offer a perspective that hasn't been represented yet, to my knowledge. The, the judge made a conclusion that I believe is false in the ruling where he supposed that the 27 QVHR permit holders would not have voted for Measure T had the QVHR program not been part of the measure. But I'm actually, as, as I believe a lot of the internet in our community knows, one of the 27 permit holders of a QVHR permit in the city of South Lake Tahoe, and I absolutely would have voted for Measure T had, regardless of, of whether or not the QVHR permit. I think it's incredibly important to protect local housing, and so I think that there's just a false notion, and unless people are willing to check with the other 26 permit holders, I just don't think those types of suppositions should be made. Thank you for your time and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, there are no additional hands raised. I did want to note for the record that we received 30 written public comments from Samuel Thol, Ying, Brower, Capella, Jane, Cochran, DeVeil, Fry1, Fry2, Fry3, Hanline, Janeski, Jervich, Kalletka, Korzak, Marlar, McIntyre, Messina, Petty, Schwartz, Saitzen Hoffman, Smith, Ward, Whale, Yunan, Yun, Lowberg, Davis, and Rose. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Blankenship. Okay, so now we are going to go into our closed session and we will have at least a report out of closed session before we possibly go into open session. Thank you all for your input. And we're going to take a short break.
All right. That was exciting. Thank you.
All right, we have one more hand raised. All right, next up is Francesca, Francesca Baling.
Hi, council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Francesca Baling. I'd like to urge you to appeal this decision on Measure T. You were elected to represent us, the voters of South Lake Tahoe, who voted Measure T into law. Many of my friends here in Tahoe own or rent houses that were previously VHRs. These homes became available for use only because of Measure T. You've heard tonight about how lucrative short-term rentals can be. I am lucky enough to live in a house that's been a long-term rental for a long time, owned by someone who I hope has no interest in turning it into a short-term rental. We are all full-time locals who contribute daily to the local economy and community. I'm not sure that many current full-time locals will be so lucky. The Measure T we voted for has a severability clause, which ensures that the measure can stand even if part of it is struck down. This judge made the wrong call. Please appeal Measure T and continue representing your local voters. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that was, oh, we have one more hand raised. Ms. Richmond.
Good evening, city council. I wanted to come in tonight to offer a perspective that hasn't been represented yet, to my knowledge. The, the judge made a conclusion that I believe is false in the ruling where he supposed that the 27 QVHR permit holders would not have voted for Measure T had the QVHR program not been part of the measure. But I'm actually, as, as I believe a lot of the internet in our community knows, one of the 27 permit holders of a QVHR permit in the city of South Lake Tahoe, and I absolutely would have voted for Measure T had, regardless of, of whether or not the QVHR permit. I think it's incredibly important to protect local housing, and so I think that there's just a false notion, and unless people are willing to check with the other 26 permit holders, I just don't think those types of suppositions should be made. Thank you for your time and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, there are no additional hands raised. I did want to note for the record that we received 30 written public comments from Samuel Thol, Ying, Brower, Capella, Jane, Cochran, DeVeil, Fry1, Fry2, Fry3, Hanline, Janeski, Jervich, Kalletka, Korzak, Marlar, McIntyre, Messina, Petty, Schwartz, Saitzen Hoffman, Smith, Ward, Whale, Yunan, Yun, Lowberg, Davis, and Rose. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Blankenship. Okay, so now we are going to go into our closed session and we will have at least a report out of closed session before we possibly go into open session. Thank you all for your input. And we're going to take a short break.
All right. That was exciting. Thank you.
All right, we have one more hand raised. All right, next up is Francesca, Francesca Baling.
Hi, council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Francesca Baling. I'd like to urge you to appeal this decision on Measure T. You were elected to represent us, the voters of South Lake Tahoe, who voted Measure T into law. Many of my friends here in Tahoe own or rent houses that were previously VHRs. These homes became available for use only because of Measure T. You've heard tonight about how lucrative short-term rentals can be. I am lucky enough to live in a house that's been a long-term rental for a long time, owned by someone who I hope has no interest in turning it into a short-term rental. We are all full-time locals who contribute daily to the local economy and community. I'm not sure that many current full-time locals will be so lucky. The Measure T we voted for has a severability clause, which ensures that the measure can stand even if part of it is struck down. This judge made the wrong call. Please appeal Measure T and continue representing your local voters. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that was, oh, we have one more hand raised. Ms. Richmond.
Good evening, city council. I wanted to come in tonight to offer a perspective that hasn't been represented yet, to my knowledge. The, the judge made a conclusion that I believe is false in the ruling where he supposed that the 27 QVHR permit holders would not have voted for Measure T had the QVHR program not been part of the measure. But I'm actually, as, as I believe a lot of the internet in our community knows, one of the 27 permit holders of a QVHR permit in the city of South Lake Tahoe, and I absolutely would have voted for Measure T had, regardless of, of whether or not the QVHR permit. I think it's incredibly important to protect local housing, and so I think that there's just a false notion, and unless people are willing to check with the other 26 permit holders, I just don't think those types of suppositions should be made. Thank you for your time and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, there are no additional hands raised. I did want to note for the record that we received 30 written public comments from Samuel Thol, Ying, Brower, Capella, Jane, Cochran, DeVeil, Fry1, Fry2, Fry3, Hanline, Janeski, Jervich, Kalletka, Korzak, Marlar, McIntyre, Messina, Petty, Schwartz, Saitzen Hoffman, Smith, Ward, Whale, Yunan, Yun, Lowberg, Davis, and Rose. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Blankenship. Okay, so now we are going to go into our closed session and we will have at least a report out of closed session before we possibly go into open session. Thank you all for your input. And we're going to take a short break.
All right. That was exciting. Thank you.
All right, we have one more hand raised. All right, next up we have Sean.
Hello, looking council. I just want to make the comment that I definitely support having a moratorium on when these go into effect. I definitely don't think 45 days is sufficient. I definitely lean towards six months. And the reason why I say that is the problems that existed before Measure T are still there and the circumstances around it are worse than they were six, seven years ago. If, I absolutely think you need to hear more public input on how to address things because the reality is we might be told that the measures that were being put into place in 2018 were going to fix the problem, but I, there's no evidence that we know that that's the case. The vast majority of the people are here talking about how well these rules work. Are the people that have financial interests in these rules working?
The meeting back to order, back into open session, and I will go to Ms. Stroud for a closed session report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had one item in closed session regarding conference with legal counsel on existing litigation in the case of South Lake Tahoe Property Owners Group versus City of South Lake Tahoe. And there is action to report out that city council voted to not file an appeal in that case, and the vote was four in favor of not filing an appeal with Councilmember Robbins voting no.
Thank you, Ms. Stroud. We'll move on to new business, item number two. Our urgency ordinance to establish temporary moratorium on issuance of vacation home rentals permits in areas where permits were prohibited by Measure T. I will turn it back over to you, Ms. Stroud.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So the purpose of the proposed ordinance before you would be to establish a temporary moratorium on issuing VHR permits in areas where they were prohibited by Measure T. That would be in residential areas, in multifamily dwellings that had VHR permits prior to September 1, 2016, and in areas that were added to the tourist corps after 2017. This time would allow the city council to study and make any desired amendments to the 2018 VHR regulations prior to beginning to issue permits in these areas. And those 2018 regulations are found in City Council Ordinance Number 1114, as it was amended by Ordinance Number 2018-1120. This urgency ordinance is authorized under state law, Government Code, Section 65858A, and the purpose would be to avoid any imminent threat to the public health, safety, and welfare that would be caused by the immediate reversion to the 2018 ordinance and issuance of up to 1,400 VHR permits, which was the cap at that time, outside the tourist corps within a short period of time. The ordinance, if adopted, would be effective immediately, and it would be in place for 45 days, which can be extended if needed after notice and a hearing. The ordinance does require a four-fifths vote of city council to pass, and if it does pass, staff would place an item on the April 22 city council agenda to discuss potential amendments to the ordinance. And the staff report did include some ideas for potential amendments. It is a non-exclusive list, so there may be other ideas. You may not like all those ideas. You may have other ideas that you like better. But with that, I am available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Stroud. Counsel, do you have any questions for Ms. Stroud? Mr. Bass?
Yeah, so yeah, thank you. So just going into real quickly kind of the previous ordinance, where we were at with Measure T and the amortization period that it allowed for the permits that previously existed to essentially expire and us not reissuing them. And I think for the public's good, there's so much talk around, you know, we should be the first in line to get these permits back. And if you could address a little bit kind of the property rights in a residential zone, and the vested right doesn't exist because your property right in a residential zone isn't necessarily to have the right of a business or income, but more a primary use of a place to live. And the reason I'm asking this, I think it's for the public's efficacy of understanding kind of that there was never a permit just taken from people. This property right expired, and it was amortized through the process of three years of Measure T. So I know that's a lot, but I think it's also something that should be put on the record for the public.
Sure, yeah, I'll do my best to address that. The VHR permits, even before Measure T, were issued for a one-year period of time. They expired after a year. They had to be renewed every year, and there was no vested right to have your permit renewed. And that was written right into the ordinance. So the Court of Appeal did uphold the ability of Measure T to phase those permits out over a period of time, so they all expired when the year was up in 2021. So there's no question, those permits were not revoked under Measure T. They expired by their own terms, and Measure T did not allow the city to renew them. So there are currently no permits issued in those areas where they're not allowed under Measure T. And there's no requirement by the judgment that's going to be entered by the court that we immediately reissue permits that people used to have. So that's one of the things you could do through a moratorium and amendment to the ordinance if desired is to think about any preference in terms of order of permitting so that we're not getting 1,400 applications all at the same time.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? Okay, thank you, Ms. Stroud. We'll open this item up for public comment. Is there any members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Ms. Underwood.
Not my intention to speak, but Cody, since you brought that up, I think I need to. You know, my company was one of the biggest backers financially of the lawsuit that occurred because we felt the need that we had to protect the rights of our people, our homeowners that we represent. We probably have close to 60 homeowners that lost permits, and I do understand the idea of the expiration, but those homeowners suffered damages. They suffered damages. They are the reason that we participated in the lawsuit, and I think that they do need to be considered first in line, not just mine, but all of the ones that lost their permits. It's only fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Underwood. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak? Mr. May?
Hello, looking council. I just want to make the comment that I definitely support having a moratorium on when these go into effect. I definitely don't think 45 days is sufficient. I definitely lean towards six months. And the reason why I say that is the problems that existed before Measure T are still there, and the circumstances around it are worse than they were six, seven years ago. I absolutely think you need to hear more public input on how to address things because the reality is, we might be told that the measures that were being put into place in 2018 were going to fix the problem, but there's no evidence that we know that that's the case. The vast majority of the people are here talking about how well these rules work. Are the people that have financial interests in these rules working? And the other fact of the matter is, if more people start making their homes into vacation rentals, the housing problem is going to get worse. We already know that everyone on this council cares about the housing issue. It's just a question of how we deal with it. And what I want to make clear is, this is going the wrong direction. So unless you want another valid initiative with people saying the city is not addressing the problem, I suggest you get more public input or at the bare minimum, make a strong public outreach to make a persuasive argument for why these regulations are sufficient, because I don't hear it yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. May. Ms. Witt?
Thank you, Mayor Wallace, City Council. I know it's very late, so sorry. I just wanted to come up here and say I am in support of a moratorium. I think 45 days is great because there is an ordinance that's already in place. There are only 76 houses on the market right now, so I think that there is a housing shortage, no matter if you have Measure T or not. There are a lot of homes for long-term rent right now. I do believe that people that had permits in the past should be up first for them, but I do not think that you need to give all 1,400 out at one time. I think it's going to be mass chaos. I think doing a tiered system over the next six months, next year, whatever, 100, 200 at a time, will allow it to have a smooth transition. And also potentially looking at, hey, you know, we're going to put 10 in the Keys, 10 in Bijou, 10 here, not to just inundate a specific neighborhood. I think there's a lot of things that we can do, and I think you can get it done in 45 days. Like I said, the ordinance, even though, you know, we didn't really have the ability to show it working from 2018 to 2021, there was only 26 vetted complaints. So I do believe that we had established something well with our working groups to bring that ordinance together when it was in 2018. But I do support the moratorium, and I think that a tiered passing out of them would be a great thing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Witt. Mr. Mosher?
Ed Mosher, South Lake Tahoe. Not at all shocked or surprised by your decision not to appeal. It's like I said, you know, four or five years into it, the ordinance there from 2003, I said the ship has sailed on the town and the ability to, the city doesn't have the ability to create the second or third economy, so you have to chase the easy buck. Just would like to point out, support the moratorium, and, you know, I don't know about 45 days if you can get it done in time, but definitely need that. You know, a couple of things to consider here is also is, you know, Ms. Wallace, you made comments recently about Frank Rush's plan or idea that he offered up when he was here of about, I don't know, it was 1,000 or 2,000 feet or something, what in navigable waterways. You know, that basically protects Tahoe Keys and keeps that intact as, you know, VHR center. So I don't know about, you know, about that plan. I wouldn't go with that. Also, I would allow the homeowners to rent out, you know, allow to rent out themselves, not have to get a local management agency or live within 30 miles or something before they could live in Carson City or something and do that. So I think they should have, you know, because this is big bucks for realtors. This is what this is really all about, realtors and property management. We're talking millions and millions of dollars a year making, and it's not really that hard a job. And they may think it is, but it's the easiest money in town for the amount that you can make. So I would allow the homeowners to be able to rent it out themselves, given that option. Also, you know, just thing to consider is where, I'm surprised, you know, TRPA, Ms. Glickert was here and Mr. Feiger for Need to Save Lake Tahoe during the scooter debate here just recently. And, you know, they were talking about Lime and Bird and the scooters, save VMTs, you know, VHRs actually creates them, creates tens of thousands of miles of VMTs per year. So, you know, in doing your permitting and stuff, or take that into consideration. You know, probably work with TRPA, see what their opinion is, if they have one. I think they became subdued quite some years ago when they ran Juan Palma out of town. So, but that is something to consider here is VMTs. Also, not to allow, go back to not allow, multifamily duplexes, triplexes, apartments. And I've had them in my neighborhood, you know, a couple of multifamily, you know, one still operating all this time during the ban, been renting out her duplex and the whole time unabated. So not allow multifamily. That's the most important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Mr. Roberson?
I typed this up in the last five minutes. Thank you for taking the first step to restore family-friendly tourism. I hope now that we can act quickly and wise and make the necessary trade-offs that you need to make to make sure that you represent all your constituents. I do want to reflect a little bit on that ordinance that people have been talking about, working or not working. On December 20, 2017, that ordinance went into effect. The city quickly hired six enforcement officers. One of the best things about that ordinance is that they needed to record every call, report back on how long it took to get to the residents, what did they find, and post it within two days. We had a very public view of how effective the ordinance was working. The results of that were sent to the city council weekly by Josh, who no longer lives here. In the first year, in 2019, there were only 58 citations for the entire year. There were, that represented about 27% of the complaints that were filed. So it was active, with six enforcement officers doing their jobs. In 2020, there were only 45 citations issued. So it was going down, and people were taking action. The fines were huge. And now you've got the capability to go even bigger. I urge a bit of caution there. We don't want to be the city that fines people as we were in the press with $1,000 parking fees. But we had $1,000 fines for parking, for noise, for occupancy, after-hours hot tub use, and other violations. People took it seriously. And we also got the support of enforcement. If we found a guest that was misbehaving, it wasn't just up to us to go there and say, "Stop or get out." If we had a problem, they would come assist us in removing the problem. So this was really a very tight community effort, and it was working. Please don't go back to the drawing board and start from scratch. That ordinance that was put in was the strictest in the country. Now, can it be better? Absolutely. All ordinances are going to continue to be refined. But let's start there. Do it quickly. We know the problems, noise, trash, parking, traffic, privacy. Those have not changed. Let's address them, address them well, start from a well-founded ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberson. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak? Mr. Fry?
Thank you, Mayor Wallace, City Council. Appreciate all of your time and the opportunity to speak. I am very grateful to hear the decision to not appeal. I feel it was the right one, and I am happy that you are regaining control over this program. I understand that tough days are ahead, and you have a lot of decisions to make. Looking forward, I urge you to be delicate in your considerations to further restrict the prior ordinance. I think the real work is needed on strategically re-implementing the program, the organizational structure, and systems needed to properly oversee and enforce it. Failure to properly enforce and control this issue is what got us into this mess. VHRs can be enforced. They do not need to be disruptive, and there are remedial solutions to take care of bad actors. I believe the data will show the Yes on T campaign and the broader anti-VHR narrative is largely built on misinformation and deceit, coupled with poor government leadership has caused irmeasurable economic harm to our community. VHRs are not why rent is expensive in this town. They are not why workers and families are leaving this town. In fact, Major T is a huge reason that people are leaving this town. VHRs are not only supported by evil, out-of-town people. I'm a local, came here when I was 19 to chase a dream. I lead a nonprofit. I employ 40 people, and I care tremendously about this community. The narrative that we are all some corporate big interest, it's just simply false. Tourists are not terrorists. They are our lifeline. I believe this is fear mongering, and it's simply not true. I'd argue the data shows long-term renters per capita are more problematic for our community than the VHRs. They certainly have been in my neighborhood. I had six on my street for many years. They never caused a single problem. My next-door neighbor made my life an utter nightmare, for which there was no recourse. Look at the data. It's all available to you, okay? Amongst the data and reports that I sent you, which is very compelling, and you all have it attached, a few that I'll highlight before I'm cut out here, $100 million a year come to the City of South Lake Tahoe through our VHRs. After banning Major T, they estimated that a net loss is in the tune of 67 million a year. That's big numbers. $5 million a year is loss in tax revenue minimum to the city. That's a big number, $5 million, that you guys could be using. Over 1,000 jobs were lost. Travel, private accommodations are the number-one employer in our community. 26% of all overnight spending, overnight lodging guests come from VHRs, okay? These are numbers that need to be driving decision-making as you go into moratorium and decide your path forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fry. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak on this item? Okay, we'll go to our Zoom platform.
Yeah, we'll open up our Zoom platform for anyone who wants to provide a public comment on Agenda Item 2. First, we have Svetlana. If you could unmute your phone? Okay, we'll come back to you, and we'll go on to Blake.
Hi, this is Blake Herschaft again, recommending that if you're going to do a moratorium, you consider six months rather than 45 days, as discussed previously. It's difficult to make proper ordinance decisions within 45 days. In addition, it was really strange to have out-of-time investors discussing this before the closed-session item, and I'd like to note a potential Brown Act violation on allowing a public comment during that time. So I would love the city attorney's view on that. Thank you.
Next up, we have Dugan.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Hey, I just want to say thank you very much for the decision you made. I think it's the right one, primarily because now you have control of it. And whatever the best solution for our community as a whole is, you can put that solution into play, and if situation change is going forward, the council will have the decision, the ability to change it going forward. Obviously, the moratorium, brief moratorium is required. You're going to have to get your ducks in a row and staff up and figure out how you're going to roll this out. When you're looking at the issues, I mean, you know, we don't need six months to figure it out. There was years and years put into this beforehand to come up with the ordinance that's on the books. There could be some tweaks, for sure, but just make sure that they're effective and really targeted at a problem that needs fixing, not blanket knee-jerk reaction measures. And I'd also ask you to really, in these deliberations, consider the positives that we bring and how you might want to spend the extra money that's going to come in, both on, you know, effective enforcement and public education and having a presence in the community with the CSOs, but also in how you can leverage that TOT money for housing initiatives or whatever you deem to be most productive for our community. Yeah, I'd ask that you honor the people that lost their permits and still have their properties first and as soon as possible, and then roll the rest out in an orderly fashion, with the emphasis being on effective control of the negatives and amplification of the positives. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, one last time, Svetlana? Okay, Svetlana, if you can't come, voice can't come through, go ahead and email publiccomment@cityofsouthlaketahoe.us, and I'll distribute your comment to council. All right, no additional public comments, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Bligh. Bring it back to council. Mr. Roberts?
Yes, I just wanted to take this moment to address all the people out there that feel that, or they're not happy with the way our vote went. And obviously, I can't speak for the entire council, but for myself, I don't want them to feel like this is us turning our backs on them. There is so many considerations, many challenges, and many missteps made in the past, and I view this as, give us the chance to make this right. Let us fix it. I, for one, feel a huge responsibility to make sure it gets fixed right, and not just, and give it all my effort and all my best efforts, but also there needs to be some expediency to it, to the homeowners that they get. We don't delay, and we don't have needless, you know, delays on this. So I just don't, please don't look at it as we turn her back, Joanna. I think this is the best way to fix it and make it right for everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Before I go to Mr. Bass, Ms. Stroud, can you, I, my understanding, and based on our previous conversations, is that this is required by law, the 45 days for an urgency ordinance, that's the limit, and that we can then extend it in increments up to two years.
That is correct. We cannot have an initial time period of a moratorium that's longer than 45 days, but it can be extended before that period is up with notice and a public hearing and another four-fifths vote.
This is similar to what we did during COVID.
We had a moratorium on...
Certain things in COVID.
Certain things.
Yeah.
I must be forgetting what they were.
That's okay. We're all trying to forget that.
We've been down this road before.
Okay. Could you also address the caller's Brown Act question?
Yes, we are required under the Brown Act to take public comment before any item, including items on closed session.
Thank you. I will just say, just for the public's information, we no longer have $1,000 fine. My understanding is that fine is now $5,000, according to state law allowing that. And our council did, well, a council voted on that.
Yes, so we adopted a resolution to increase our fines for VHR violations, I believe it was early last year, late 2023, and that's still in place. And it's $1,500 for a first violation, $3,000 for a second, and $5,000 for a third violation.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Bass?
Yeah, so, very similar to Mr. Roberts, I think, you know, as I could, I was very torn on this, but I went along with not appealing because I do think, you know, we're in a very unique situation to find the middle ground. And my goal in not appealing is to make sure that we don't have another citizens' initiative. And I think when we look back to 2017, it was the failure of the council that a citizens' initiative happened. And I trust this council that we can come together and come to that middle ground to find a way for this to work. There are, you know, different zones that have different uses allowed, and we have the tourist corps, and we have the commercial zones. And in those zones, VHR ordinance and regulation is very different than when we look at a residential zone. We have to remember the primary use of our residential zone is for our residents, and we really do have to protect the uses of that. And we also have got to make sure that we don't open up those residential zones for proliferation of investments that are going to push out the residents. And I think that if we get thoughtful about this and we go through the process of it, we can find that solution. I think that what didn't happen before were things that I've been told by multiple proponents of Measure T, that if they would have been, you know, agreed to or even come to the table and found a, you know, a solution to a number and a cap, potentially a buffer that makes sure that, you know, somebody's not surrounded by six VHRs on all sides of them. These are solutions that need to really be considered, and these things can help it make sure that we don't end up, you know, with a whole street of VHRs and we aren't, you know, having long-term rentals and houses being sold over and over and over and pushing out our long-term rentals. But allow for VHRs in a reasonable manner that actually work. And one of the biggest advantages, I think, that we have... And one of the biggest advantages I think that we have is that we are at a completely clean slate. So we've got to be thoughtful in the way that we do this because this isn't where a lot of places are when they come to regulate, where they already have 1,000. And you, you know, we're at a very clean slate with our residential zones, and so if we do this right and we do this thoughtful, I think that we can get to that place, that we don't have another citizens initiative. Is everybody going to walk away happy? Not at all. But that's not, that's not what regulation is, and we have to find the middle ground, stop the divisive energy, get to a place that's best for the community, and I think we can do that. I have trust in this council and, and also the public process. The, you know, idea that 45 days, I think we also need to recognize, there is a lot of thought to how this rolls out. We don't want to be renewing hundreds of permits on the same time every single year. So there's, it's gonna take thought on how this happens. We also have, you know, a lot of staff to hire with background checks and, and there's, so, so the idea that we're, you know, there really can't be a rush, I'm going to say. I think we can go as fast as we can go, but it's not going to happen just overnight, and people need to understand that and work with us. Give us the time. We do want to hear from the public. We want to hear from both sides, and we want to get to the best place that hopefully allows us as a community to move forward and do what's best. And again, I will say that our residents need to be a primary focus in our residential zones. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. Mr. Robbins?
This is the city council turning its back on the people and the citizens of this community in no uncertain terms. Writes that the authority to govern does not flow from government to the people. It flows from the people to the government. And as has been said in public comments, that this is an opportunity to regain control of something that was stripped from the, something that was stripped from the rights of the city. The city doesn't have rights. People have rights. Voters have rights, and voters are superior to the city council. We work for them, not the other way around. And the voters voted for Measure T to take away the right of the, to take away the authority of the city explicitly to put vacation rentals in residential neighborhoods. And by abandoning the defense of that measure at an opportune and convenient moment to give the moneyed interests what they wanted, we have exactly done the opposite of what our mandate is from the people, and I'm exceedingly disappointed in that outcome, if not surprised. That said, 45 days is absolutely not enough to craft any kind of replacement ordinance with any kind of thought or, or intention. We have to extend that ordinance. It is the minimum amount we're allowed to do now, but it has to be extended beyond that in order to decide what a new ordinance would be, and then, having done that, give staff enough time to actually hire enforcement officers, code officers, people to actually implement and execute that, that operation. I cannot fathom the idea of regressing to where we were the day before Measure T. That would be recklessness on top of, on top of malfeasance. This is not something to celebrate in any, in any case, the idea that we now have an opportunity to find a middle ground. The council, the previous councils had that opportunity for years. They failed to do anything of the sort, and the public took, took the action into their own hands, as is their right in California. They made that decision to put Measure T. The council does, should not, does not own it, nor should they think that they own it. So in choosing to do this now, we have taken away the will of the majority and handed it to the will of the minority, and that's not something that is our purview. Thank you.
Mr. Jenkins?
First, the reason we had a Measure T, in my view, is that the rules and regulations that were in place were not implemented. They were not enforced. Maybe there was even flaws in the regulations as they sat. So what we now have an opportunity is to bring us all together to look at that situation and say, how do we now remedy that so that we can have rules and regulations that respects our citizens and our neighbors and also respects the rights of people who are invested in this community? And I, I think that's important. I think there are lessons from the past that the council members, Ms. Robbins and others, have identified, that you have identified. We have to overcome that. If we can't do that, then that will be another problem in the future that I don't want to face. We need to do our jobs and take care of business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. I have a question for Ms. Stroud. Any future extensions of the moratorium, do they have the same method of passing?
Yes, for a four-fifths vote.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I move. Let's see, do I have something to read?
Yeah, hold on, right here.
Okay. I move that the council pass an urgency ordinance adopting a temporary moratorium on the issuance of vacancy home rental permits in areas where permits were prohibited by Measure T.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
That motion unanimously carries.
Okay, well, thank you all very much for a good conversation. Our next meeting is April 22nd, and we will keep the public informed on the process. Thank you.